Good evening. At this time, please silence your cell phones and be advised that these proceedings are being recorded. For those of you physically present tonight with us, if you desire to address the council during the meeting, please complete a request-to-speak form available at the front answer it and present it to City Clerk. Madam City Clerk, will you raise your hand? I think we have somebody that wants to hand you a speakers form. Speakers both physically present and those participating via Zoom will be called upon at the appropriate time, and each person is allowed three minutes' speaking time. Madam City Clerk, if you would, please make your Zoom broadcasting announcement.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As of June 15th, the City of Grand Terrace reopened its public meetings. If you would like to participate telephonically and speak on an agenda item, you can access the meeting by dialing 1-669-900-9128, enter meeting ID number 831-1186-0364, and password number 411469. You will be placed in the waiting room muted until it is your turn to speak. You may also submit your comments by sending them to CCPublicComment@GrandTerrace-CA.gov. City of Grand Terrace thanks you for doing your part preventing the spread of COVID-19.
Thank you. So at this time, I will call to order the regular council meeting for the City Council and the City Council as successor agency to the Community Redevelopment Agency, meeting of August 10th, 2021. Tonight, we have with us Pastor Steve McCann of Azure Hill Seventh-day Adventist Church, who will offer an invocation, and following that, our interim city manager, Michael Milheiser, will lead the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Father, it is a privilege to be able to meet on behalf of the best interests of the city and community. I thank you for the blessings that you promised, that we can do everything that we do with discernment, that we can balance when to be visionary, when to be careful, when to have the big picture as well as the details, and to be unwavering, able to compromise. And what happens here, may we have good reasons to have laughter, smiles, and pray to Jesus.
Amen.
If you would please place your hand over your heart and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance to the greatest flag of the greatest country in the world. Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor McCann. Thank you, Mr. Milheiser. Madam City Clerk, may we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Allen?
I'm here.
Councilmember Wilson?
I'm here.
Councilmember Robles?
Present.
Mayor Magna Bo.
Present.
Mayor Protem Hesse is absent. Madam Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Is there any reordering of additions to or removal of items from the agenda?
No, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. We have no special presentation, so we'll go to the consent calendar. The consent calendar items are expected to be routine and non-controversial, and they will be acted upon by the City Council at one time without discussion. Any council member, staff member, or resident citizen may request removal of an item from the consent calendar for discussion. Are there any items to be removed for discussion at this time? All right. Seeing none, I will remind you that Agenda Item Number 7 on the consent calendar is both a City Council and successor agency item, and therefore, the item will be voted on by both the City Council and City Council as a successor agency to the Community Redevelopment Is there any reason why we still can't take them all at one time, Mr. City Attorney?
No. What I would do is just for that item, I would have a separate vote for the successor agency.
Okay, very good. So I'll entertain a motion for the consent calendar.
Madam Mayor, I'll move the consent calendar.
Motion by Councilmember Allen, second by Councilmember Wilson. Madam City Clerk, if you'll call the vote, please.
Councilmember Allen?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Robles?
Yes.
Mayor Magna Bo.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Okay, so Item 7 as the successor agency to the Community Redevelopment Agency, do I have a motion for that item?
I'll move that item also, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay. So Member Allen made the motion, Member Wilson made the second. Please call the vote, Madam City Clerk.
Board Member Allen?
Yes.
Board Member Wilson?
Yes.
Board Member Robles?
Yes.
And Chair Magna Bo.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. All right, we'll move to public comment. This is the time for members of the public to comment on items not appearing on the regular agenda. Because of restrictions contained in California law, the City Council may not discuss or act on items not on the agenda. They may briefly respond to statements made or ask questions for clarification. Items may have a response from staff to questions raised, and items may be agendized for future meeting. Request to speak at this time, Madam City Clerk. Ann Wade Hornsby?
I am Ann Wade Hornsby. I live at 22594 Eaton Drive in Grand Terrace. And at the last meeting, I presented a request to have our dog park open to half a day on Wednesday, and I got a call back, and I had reasons to explain why that might be an issue. But I have since gotten 124 signatures from people at the park with their dogs who would like it to happen, and I spoke to every one of them personally with their dogs in the park. I spoke with our interim city manager, and he mentioned that city works need time to do maintenance, and we all appreciate that. Well, we have a great dog park. There are waste bags available, the grass is nice, tables are available, and it's all really good. Holes usually get filled, which we also appreciate. Dogs are dogs, and they dig holes, and I have filled up a lot of them myself. I think maintenance does, too. Having said that, my husband and I have come to the park on Wednesday afternoons, and there is no one there, and many other people said the same thing in the afternoon. In the morning, we have seen them. Much like our dogs, we are creatures of habit, and my husband and I have showed up many Wednesdays to take our dog to that dog park, and it's closed. And we are not the only ones. There are, I would say, half the people on this list said the same thing, that they forget about it, and they just don't, you know, they'd rather have it open for part of the day. When the park is closed, we have to go to Riverside, Redlands, or Loma Linda, which are pretty far away. It's, you know, not advantageous gas-wise or whatever, and they're not as nice as our parks. Now, the La Cadenia one in Colton, which is the closest one, is it never closes, ever. They just switch sides when they're cleaning it, because we've been there when they do that. It's off a very rough gravel road, it has a homeless population, which uses the waterers for cleaning up and filling their plastic containers, and it is not a welcoming place if you go there by yourself, which I've done, and it's not fun. The other dog parks aren't closed more than a half a day, and that includes the huge one in Riverside. Compared to the other parks, our grass is in really good shape. It was closed this year for a month, and we figured it was to rest the grass, but not one person that I talked to on that list saw a difference in the park. I'm just saying, it was nice to begin with, and it still is. If that's a concern, it would be easy to get an aerial view with a drone, like the power companies use, or I bet you there are citizens in Grand Terrace that could probably let you use a drone to check out from above if the grass is getting sparser or whatever. And then you could do it, say, again in a month after the half-day schedule starts, or any time that you felt that it needed to be looked at, and then if there's wear, then we could revisit the time schedule, but we could sure try it. There are people who signed this petition, the people that did it, is because we have such a welcoming and nice dog park. It has a great walking track, which is a real plus, nice benches and tables, shade. The people who come here appreciate it and would like to have access every day. We do not think that a half-day Wednesday is too much to ask, and it's worth a try. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wade Hornsby. I appreciate your energy and enthusiasm, and I know that staff will look into your proposal.
Thanks, because all of these people, they couldn't all come. A lot of them work, you know, in the E or into, oh, oh, you came, good. And there's more, because I told them, I thought you'd have more stuff on the agenda, so I said you could come later than six. But there'll be more people coming, I'm pretty sure.
No, I take your words seriously, as does the council, and your enthusiasm and your work that you've put in. But I believe that City Public Works and interim city manager-
Yes.
-will work on something, and they will get back to you and talk to you.
Yes, please.
But thank you so much.
And we're very willing to do that.
Thank you so much. And we have pictures that were sent in by Ms. Juanita Odenbaugh that I would like to have given to the Public Works Director for his review. Any other requests to speak during this time?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right, so we'll close public comments and come back to our agenda. No public hearings, no unfinished business. We have one item of new business, which is approval of amendment to agreement with Interwest Consulting Group for On-Call Engineering Services. Mr. Public Works Director, Eric Weck.
Eric Weck, Public Works Director, City of Grand Terrace. Okay, so tonight, before you and your Agenda Packet, Item G9 is the approval to the amendment to the agreement with Interwest Consulting for On-Call Services. And this amendment will support and protect our community and its exceptional quality of life through thoughtful planning within the constraints of a fiscally responsible government, as well as support our core values by continuing to provide exceptional customer service to the City of Grand Terrace. Now, as far as a little background, Interwest Consulting was awarded their initial contract in June of 2020 for $50,000. The consultant provided during that time, well, during that time, the previous Public Works Director left, and so there needed to be some infill by Interwest Consulting under a separate contract, not this one. But in so doing, they provided engineering and consulting services by preparing the project plans, specs, and estimate, as well as providing the inspection services for the Onyx paving project that completed about two months ago. That was citywide, and that's also in the Agenda Packet for the notice of completion. So they also, during that last fiscal year, they provided traffic engineering expertise on an on-call basis, as well as inspection for development and other improvement projects. They plan reviewed technical studies for development, as well as water quality management plans. And likewise, they also provided some project management and oversight for various Public Works projects. So their present workload that they are already involved in is closing out the high, oh, I'm sorry, is developing the Highway Safety Improvement Program. That's the guardrail project that I believe Mr. Eisenbites presented a few months ago. And then we're still working on getting a consultant onboard to develop plans and specs and also interface with Caltrans. Likewise, there's the Mount Vernon Intersection Improvement Project that recently completed. That's a federally funded project, so likewise, there's some Caltrans and federal paperwork that needs to be completed and filed and secured, ready for an audit if that date comes. There's also, they are also plan, helping me plan review some other improvement projects and do some on-call inspections. And finally, they are involved, heavily involved, in the Mount Vernon Road Improvement Project. I value Interwest's assistance to me since Public Works only has three maintenance workers to maintain the dog park, as well as other parks, and just myself. So they're able to take some of the workload off of me in Public Works to keep these projects moving. So staff recommends that City Council approve the amendment for the On-Call Engineering Service Agreement with Interwest Consulting, which will increase the total compensation by $50,000. Likewise, authorize, please authorize the mayor to execute the above-mentioned agreement subject to city attorney approval as to form. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Director Weck. Are there questions of staff at this time? Councilmember Allen?
Thank you for that report. My question is, you're asking us to extend or to increase the total compensation to double the amount from 50,000 to 100,000. Is this going to extend the timeframe of the contract?
No, their contract ends, I believe, in July of 2022. So it's to carry us out for another fiscal year.
There's a, in the original agreement, there's a couple of places where it specifically states that the total compensation for all services for this timeframe will be 50,000 and no more. Is there a reason why that can't, that we didn't know back then that it wasn't enough? I mean, I know you weren't here, but do you have a, maybe you or Mr., I don't know, does somebody know why? You know, that when we were promised we didn't need, that this would be enough, and now it's not. I don't know. It's okay if you can't answer that, just, you know, you can tell me that.
Well, I do know Interwest is working on a lot of projects for me, and they've kept them moving forward while I was, you know, prior to me coming here. And in sitting down with Mr. Eisenbites, he, we spent about five hours going through all the projects in various stages of development. And his knowledge is invaluable to me. There's many projects that I did not list here that he's, that he knows about that I will be seeking his assistance on.
So I can appreciate Interwest and their, the value that they provide and the services that they provide, but what I'm getting at is that a year ago, Interwest said, for what you want us to do, it'll be 50,000 for two years. And now, a year into it, they're saying, oops. So that's what I'm, that's my point. I would like to have known this a year ago. I'd like for them to have said this a year ago, and I'd like, unless something changed on our part, and that's what I would like to know.
I think I have a different take on that, but Mr. City Attorney would like to speak.
Yes. Yeah, I don't, I don't think this is an Interwest issue. I think this is more of the city budgeting, what it expected to use over the next two years. And so I think their costs or their fee structure is not changing. It's how much we're basically budgeting for and allowing within the contract period. And so we, I think there was a thought that it would take a longer period of time to use up to 50,000, whereas I guess there was a lot of work given to them, more than expected earlier on. We've liked their work, and we want to continue working with them without changing the rate structure. They're getting paid the exact same amount per service. The only issue is we want to use it, use it more over the next year.
Just, it's, I'm missing, I'm only getting like half of your conversation, because there's something coming over the speaker, some feedback.
Zoom feedback.
So do I understand you right, Mr. City Attorney?
Yes.
That when you say their rate structure is not changing, then is their rate 50,000 a year?
No, it's the amount of services that we're requesting.
Oh, so, oh, so a year ago, we're requesting more than we requested a year ago. Is that how I understand it?
No, it's, we're requesting more than we anticipated, I guess.
Okay, all right. That's fair.
That's my understanding.
Okay.
And yet, it says that we budgeted for this work. Councilmember Wilson, you had a question?
I really have a question. My understanding is, is when it's a not-exceed item, it's really a waistband. And there have been quite a few changes within our, within our purview, including the separate agreement for the substitute Public Works Director that would cause some scope of work changes, and fairly drastic. And so we always have the option to go in and rebid work that we really quite don't know the scope of work for. But if we have a company that responds well, and we like working with and have history with, then it makes a lot more sense to give them another narrow waistband. So they could have easily given us a $100,000 waistband for two years, but that's a pretty big waistband on a not-exceed, you know, basically a purchase order. So that's the reason why that was done that way.
Councilmember Robles, do you have questions?
Wasn't, my understanding, Director, was the history of this, we've been told by the previous city manager, as projects come into the city, we don't have the staff to expedite them in the fashion that would be best practices for bringing development into the city. So we'll use Intercept to help us, and that's what, why we've always had Intercept.
Interwest.
Interwest, yeah. So this isn't something that we haven't not known. We've been told by our city manager as we go along about using this service.
And bear in, thank you, ma'am. And bear in mind also that when this contract ends, it'll be re-solicited. We'll put out another RFP and go through the process of, you know, selecting a consultant, getting their, getting their scopes, or getting their proposals, and going through their proposals, and then coming up with a consultant that's best suited.
Thank you. Does that make sense, Councilmember Allen?
Yeah, yes, really, it does, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions of staff at this time? All right. See, no more questions? Any requests to speak on this item?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right. So we'll bring it back to council for consideration of a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the amendment to the On-Call Engineering Services Agreement with Interwest Consulting Group to increase the total compensation by 50,000 to a total of 100,000 and authorize the mayor to execute the above-mentioned amendment subject to city attorney approval as to form.
Yeah, next time, I'd like to make some motions during a meeting.
Would you like to second the motion?
Yeah, I'll second the motion.
All right. A motion by Councilmember Allen, second by Councilmember Robles.
I didn't hear you, Matt, Councilmember.
You make them all.
And we only have the one item tonight.
I know.
All right.
No, we had a-
Would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Allen?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Robles?
Yes.
Mayor Magna Bo.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. We have no requests for future agenda items, so we will come to council for their comments and reports. Councilmember Jeff Allen to begin.
Thanks, Mayor. I don't have anything to report from the previous. I just want to remind anybody out there listening, August 12th, skate park meeting. Okay, that'd be a good meeting. If anybody interested in skate park, I'll see you there.
Thank you, Councilmember Allen. Councilmember Doug Wilson?
Mayor, I'd like to report that I'm making progress on the health-wise, and hopefully, next meeting, I will be there in person. We did have one issue in relation to the San Bernardino Valley Municipal Water District. There's a move afoot to obliterate the Advisory Commission. Not 100% sure where it originated from, but I communicated, at least in this time of transparency and all that other good stuff, that it might not be a good idea to just abandon the Advisory Commission. They predicated their argument on that there had been six meetings where there was not a forum out of 43 meetings. And I thought it was interesting, because 43 meetings during the last two years? I'm surprised they only had six, that they didn't have a forum. So I communicated that we would, that we would prefer that the Advisory Commission stands as is, and we'll see what happens. Their meeting is going to be on Thursday. That's all I have.
Thank you, Councilmember Wilson. Councilmember Sylvia Robles?
The only thing I have to share is my recent experience with the National Orange Show noise. I just want the public to know that every time there is one, I don't use earplugs, because as one of your council representatives, I feel that I should know what the noise is and experience it. My past practice was to call the city manager, because I didn't really understand how it was being handled. But how it was being handled is when you, you know, I wanted to make a citizen's complaint as an individual about noise. And so our dispatch sheriff says, well, it's the city of San Bernardino, so I called their dispatch, and they were, I was told there was nothing they could do about the noise, that I would have to call the promoter. And the promoter would send this roving group to try to tap down the noise. And my feeling is, this last rave, when it first started, actually shook my patio door to my bedroom because of the low bass sound. And I don't think it's a remedy to have you experience noise, to be angry, to be upset that you are not being able to sleep. This last one went into a Sunday. I tell you that if I had to work the following day, I would have been completely inefficient. The sheriff came and visited my home, and I said, you know, I don't understand, I'm reporting a noise, I'm making a noise complaint, and I made a noise complaint to the appropriate agency, and I was rebuffed. And I said, this would be like, my neighbor's making noise past 10:00, and it's very loud, and I'm to call the neighbor's party planner to solve it? So I communicated to our city manager and city attorney, you know, we have to do something about this. What has happened is, we had a subcommittee, we met with them, and the consequence is that we got weekly, we got more events at the center. And this last event was rebuffed by two cities because of the problems it causes. And San Bernardino eagerly took that. I did call the mayor of San Bernardino, and the Sunday rave, he returned my call, and I went to my back patio, and during the call, I was able to have that loud crescendo of noise and put him on the phone to hear, and he was quite amazed. But, you know, we have that hill, and we have issues with noise, but I just want you to know, I'm suffering with you with this noise, and hopefully, we'll get somewhere with it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Robles. So I have a couple updates. One of them is OmniTrans. The board is dark this month, but the executive committee met. A couple of the items, they are transitioning to electric buses at this time. They have four fully-electric buses in their fleet, and they are working towards compliance with state regulations that will require them to be 100% zero emission by 2040. In July, Foothill Transit had an electric bus catch fire, and that was causing concerns with individuals wondering about the OmniTrans buses. The Foothill Transit bus fire was not related to a charging system, but to other wiring, and the makers of their buses are different than those that OmniTrans has purchased from. So the purchase of the buses by OmniTrans are actually from a company that makes buses first, and then they are making them electric buses, as opposed to Foothill Transit purchased a, purchased buses from a battery manufacturer who build buses around it. So they're just wondering if maybe that's part of the issue. They are going into this electric bus changeover very cautiously, though, to make sure that
Also, the OmniTrans board will be transitioning their meetings into in-person meetings, starting with the next month. They will continue hybrid and have up to nine board members physically in the boardroom. This allows for physical distance, but it also ensures that a quorum is present in the room. And that way, if changes are made to the Brown Act for OmniTrans and other agencies like that, they will at least have a quorum present, and those zooming in will find a way to allow them to continue to participate. Staff members will attend in person as needed for the meeting support, and public participation will be supported through Zoom and telephone. As of August 1st, OmniTrans buses have been free for K through 12 students. They call it free fares for school. It's a pilot program, and they're welcoming students back to in-person learning with free bus rides, but not just to school. You can go to after-school activities or around town to meet up with friends. All you need to do is show your student ID. No purchase, no purchase or registration is necessary. San Bernardino County Transportation Authority Board is dark this August. And then with California Joint Powers Insurance Authority, I wanted to encourage my colleagues to consider attending the 26th Annual Risk Management Educational Forum. They are returning to an in-person event this year. It will be at Catamaran Resort Hotel in San Diego from October 6th through 8th. And the keynote speaker is Captain Richard Phillips, author of A Captain's Duty. He is the captain that faced the Somali pirates and worked with the Navy SEALs. And how he makes that about risk management in the city, well, that's what you need to show up to find out. Anyway, so consider going, and if there are staff that can attend, that might be interesting for them as well. So that's the last of my report. We'll move on to city managers' communications. Mr. Milheiser, do you have anything for us tonight?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. First, I, I look forward to meeting Councilman Wilson in person. I'm glad, it looks like he's feeling better, so hopefully that'll be sooner than later. Secondly, I appreciate the information I get from some of the council members, either via email, phone call, or in person. So thank you for that. Chief Mahia at the staff meeting said that AMR is having trouble with staffing, and so if you call for an ambulance, I want to let the council know and members of the community that there may be a 15-minute to 30-minute wait for ambulances at times. So I just wanted to notify the council of that. As far as the Orange Show, I don't know what the policy is here, so may I ask a question, Madam Mayor, of how we might go about doing a meeting with them? We, we could ask them to come to a meeting. They have an executive director, and they have a lay, a lay board member who's a prominent attorney in Riverside, and we could ask the two of them to come to a council meeting and ask questions and give the community an opportunity to hear their response and, and let the council ask questions. But that's, I'll, I can talk to you later about that, Madam Mayor.
No, I, I think that's a good idea, and we did have the promoter reach out to us, so.
Yes, I got that.
It would, it would be good to, to have them come back and, and speak with us publicly, absolutely.
We did, we did meet with them.
But was it a public meeting?
No.
Yeah, I, I think we should have a public meeting with them here, ask them to come because they, they need to hear, you know, what their, their business plan is doing to, to your residents, so. I'd like to thank the staff for the, the first two weeks I've been here. They've been really a privilege to, to work with and giving me information to try and, and make me feel welcome, so I appreciate that, all of you. And I think that is it, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Thank you very much. With that, we will recess to close session. We have one item to consider. Public employee appointment pursuant to Government Code Sections 54954.5E and 54957, title city manager. If you are not with us when we return to report out, the next regular city council meeting will be held on Tuesday, August 24th, 2021, at 6:00 PM. Any request to have an item placed on future agenda must be made in writing and submitted to the city clerk's office, and the request will be processed in accordance with council procedures. So at this time, recess to close session. Are we ready? All right, we'll reconvene to open session. City council met in closed session to review one item. Public employee appointment pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.5E and 54957, city manager. No reportable actions, direction given to staff. So at this time, we will adjourn to our next regular city council meeting to be held on Tuesday, August, I almost said October. Tuesday, August 24th, 2021, at 6:00 PM. Any request to have an item placed on a future agenda must be made in writing and submitted to city clerk's office, and the request will be processed in accordance with council procedures. We are adjourned.